I'd like to welcome everybody to a public hearing. Tonight is Thursday, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, and it's about five o'clock, five oh two to be exact. The hearing tonight is a hearing at which time we're inviting the public to comment on proposed amendment to the Bristol County Water Authority's rates, fees, and charges. And in a moment, we'll be, I'll be turning this over to our executive director, Stephen Hutu, to make a presentation about the changes to our fees and rates. And look forward to any comments that members in the public have. So without any further ado, I turn it over to the director.
Good evening, everybody. I have a, I would say, fifty- or twenty-minute presentation. And after we've answered questions. Presentation gives an overview of Bristol County Water Authority, some of the work that we've been doing, the work that we have planned, budget requirements, and what we're anticipating for rates for the next year. The photo here, this is, I just looked at this picture here. First of all, I think it's an amazing photo, but those actually are two employees of ours making a repair to a cable to an antenna at the top of the tank at Roger Williams University there. And the photo was actually taken by one of our foremen with a drone. He does a great job capturing images of our infrastructure and different types of projects, but I encourage him to enter this photo into New England Water Works' annual photo contest, and this was, this won first prize.
Now, one second, brother.
All right. Lauren is not dancing.
That's a short one.
This one happens when you try long.
Is it doing both directions?
No.
What about the other direction?
Nothing.
So you can raise that.
Practice, in practice, if this one.
I'm not sure what to say.
And the capital budget from evening stuff.
Of course, connected, yeah.
Can you raise manually, please?
I think questions. Perfectly going up.
How many times have we practiced this, Steve?
Yes.
There we go.
You just raise it manually?
Nope, the thing is, I can't believe it's frozen. No, because that's like totally frozen. We are never going to believe this. We practiced this before.
Got that on the dock.
And now it's completely frozen, and I don't want to restart. I'm gonna try rebooting. Yeah, I have to, I unfortunately have to reboot it.
Pause, everybody. Reboot.
Come on. Hold your slide. Storybook time. Far, far away. Our Providence waters. The Riddickar waters.
Yeah, I just keep words off my computer.
Is that? What else was I actually?
I thought it was just like a sound.
The silver part is a plug.
Yeah, I know. Oh, yeah, that's probably the line, the trigger.
They got that back once.
Here we go.
Because we just tested it.
Which key showed up and said, I got more coming out.
Let me turn it. But no, it's a big, it's a real, it's a big, it's a big.
Stuff that was right off the light, right behind where the fire station.
We're just saying that.
A couple of them. It can, it's something.
Six minutes, sir. So you're also running. You're sitting there with the off and landing.
Where are they working?
Yeah. Here's my spot. For, while you're paying, so, yeah, I wonder why you should go see the thing.
Around five hundred feet.
Three or four.
Just a little green. It's like turkey, Camperdokie.
Well, that's because they have to, they're going to throw a towel.
Sure, it was her, not him.
Yeah, well, sure, because he was standing on the floor. And he was, I think he's powerful.
We've seen this.
It's a simple.
Tech technology. It's PDF.
It's made.
Stop breaking that stadium.
All those annoying air messes.
Some of those X-house.
Guys, I never got to grow up a tank.
Next year, probably.
You gotta close out that PDF up there.
Yeah, close the menu.
Yeah, but close the top right there. Hey.
Now try it.
Oh, my gosh. We got a snapshot of it.
I wish I could do page now. Oh, no. Why does no one know?
All right, we all here, those will fall apart.
There it is.
No, 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 okay, guys, just tell me when the golden bell.
Okay, go back. Okay. Okay, so we serve Barrington, Bristol, Little Warren. Population is a little over fifty thousand for the twenty-twenty census. That actually should be as of the end of this, last year, twelve-three-one-twenty-four, seventeen thousand three hundred ninety-five meter connections, the average three-point-two million gallons per day, two-hundred-and-thirty-three miles of pipe, and thirty-two employees, which is one less employee than when I first started here a few years ago.
Is the one less employee intended to be permanent, less?
It's been, it's been, it's been permanent for a couple of years now. And I don't have plans to be filling that position. According to our strategic plan, we have four major strategic initiatives, and that's continue to maintain high-quality water, and that's through our ongoing infrastructure upgrades that we do, secure an alternative water supply source, AKA the Tucket Pipeline Project. We continue to enhance information management systems to improve our efficiencies, continue to provide exceptional customer service, and ensure financial stability. So what are our challenges? Our challenges are, we have a single source of water supply. All our water is purchased from Providence Water. So if there was ever an issue with our supply, that is a major concern. You know, similar to many communities in the New England area of aging infrastructure, many old cast iron pipes in the system, and although we've been addressing it with low system pressure, we still have areas of low system pressure. The cost of necessary infrastructure upgrades continue to increase, and that's not only with, you know, pipe materials and labor, but we're seeing an increase in restoration costs, you know, normally paving due to some of the requirements from the communities that we serve. There's limited state and federal funding for the work that we do, so all our work is funded by rates and charges. We have been divesting our obsolete infrastructure to eliminate financial burden and liability. That would be the dam and the Bama Plant. We have an increased need for security of our facilities, and particularly cyber, which is an ongoing and upcoming issue. Maintaining a stable and well-trained workforce. The water industry has seen a, it's difficult to, you know, find people who are trained and to keep people. It's been an issue with a lot of different agencies. And we're seeing a decline in trend in water usage and water sales, which has an impact on our rates because it's basically based on our water usage. Here's a slide that we, I upgrade, you know, update every year. You can see, you know, it's very visual to see how our water sales have decreased over the past twenty to twenty-five years, actually pretty dramatically. It does look like that we've kind of reached, kind of started that low plateau there towards the end. We're kind of just under like a, about, under a billion gallons a year there. And, you know, so what does that do? So our rates are based on usage and a fixed charge. As usage goes down, it impacts the usage rate, so we have a high reliability to make sure our revenues are, stay stable by increasing the fixed charges as well. The issue of water supply, as mentioned earlier, all our water comes from Providence Water System, which is the Sichu Reservoir, a very robust watershed, and we receive on average three-point-two million gallons per day from it. As we all can remember, you have the issue of a leak back in twenty nineteen. We have a, our pipeline was a twenty-four-inch steel pipeline, hundred sixty feet, in the bedrock beneath Providence River. That pipeline sprung a leak, and it was repaired now with an eighteen-inch PVC slipline pipe. So we went from a twenty-four-inch pipe to an eighteen-inch pipe coming across the river. The solution that's been identified is make a connection to the Tucket Water Supply System, which is an independent water supply system. They have a high-quality water, and they also have plenty of it. You know, the plan would be to take at least minimum usage from either Providence or Tucket, so that pipeline, either pipeline would always be moving, and then purchase the balance from the least expensive. We recently signed a water supply agreement with the Tucket Water Supply Board. The first phase of this pipeline connection was completed in twenty-twenty-two, and this was a twenty-four-inch interconnection with East Providence, and this provides us with a critical redundant connection to the Providence supply. And Phase Two is still in design, you know, the Tucket Phase Two project. We're, we're, they're moving along. We're around seventy-five percent on average for that project. This is a sketch of the pipeline route. It's five miles of thirty-inch pipeline, proposed to be constructed along with East Providence, and the pipeline runs from the East Providence Kent Heights site, and, you know, through some city streets out to Warren Avenue, and then, as you can see here, we have a critical crossing of Interstate one-ninety-five. The plan is to do a bore into the bedrock underneath the highway here. It comes up in a parking lot of a business, makes its way between a couple of businesses onto Waterman Avenue. This is a section of Waterman and the Tucket, and then from there here on, it's Tucket Avenue all the way up. You know, given that's a thirty-inch pipe, busy street, trying to find an avenue, it's been, has been very challenging, you know, considering all the other utilities that are in the roadway. You have, you know, East Providence Water, sewer, gas, electric, telecommunications, and everything else. The cost of this pipeline project is anywhere between fifty to seventy million dollars, you know, mainly because a lot of the challenges involved. Good, Mark? And then this is the second half here. It picks up, just to, just to give you some landmarks here. This would be Agawam Country Club. You have to cross over the Ten Mile River, then continuing up Tucket Avenue. We cross over the railroad, and then we connect into Tucket Supply just at the East Providence-Tucket Line. So we develop our budget for the construction costs of this project with and without East Providence. East Providence has agreed to, has agreed to date the cost share in the design, and you can see in the last bullet, they've contributed over six hundred thousand dollars to date for that effort. We built reserves over the last several years to apply to the project costs to minimize our rate increases going forward. We also budget conservatively. We do not account for any state or federal funding. And when we do move forward with this project, it's likely that we will obtain funding through Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, which provides low-interest loans, and that project has historically ranked high on the state project hiring list. Now, within our own system, the distribution system, as mentioned earlier, we have a lot of older pipes, and to maintain a good quality water in a reliable system, it's necessary for us to continue to put money into the system, provide upgrades to the system, and that's either through replacing older pipes or using a method called cleaning and lining, where we minimize the amount of paving that we need to do. We install a concrete liner within the existing cast iron pipe. Over the past ten years, we rehab on nearly a hundred thousand feet. And as you can see, there's no shortage of work. You know, the cast, unlined cast iron pipe makes up a third of the system, about seventy five, seventy-eight miles. They're color-coded in red, and you can see it's pretty much scattered throughout the district in all three towns, the unlined cast iron pipe. And those are the areas of really most concern that, you know, that need the cleaning. It's also, these types of pipes are also, particularly during the winter months, subject to cracking when we have some ground shifting due to freezing thaw cycles. This is the work that we completed last year. About one-point-three miles of pipeline we have relocated, and we had some work in each of the three communities. For next year, the project that we're planning to do is a pipeline replacement project on Gurning Avenue. This is a pipeline that we found became compromised when we were phasing in the newer high-pressure zone, and this main on Gurning Avenue cracked due to the higher pressure, and we found out that a good portion of that pipe was compromised due to corrosion. So we spent some time identifying the extent of this project, and we're going to be replacing a considerable portion of that this coming construction season. We also have a pipeline rehabilitation and system redundancy project, kind of right up front in front of the old Bama Trucker plant here in Chow Street. And our ten-year capital plan includes one-point-five million per year for ongoing pipeline renewal work. That is a very busy slide here, but I can mention, although the system does not have a lot of lead in it compared to other systems in the state, however, there have been some significant rule changes in early twenty-twenty-four. Required quite a bit of work for water supply systems, particularly on the administrative side. One of the things that we had to do was identify every service line throughout the district, not only on what we are responsible for on the public side, from the main to the curb stop, but also on the private side. So that took quite a bit of effort to review records, contact with customers, to try and determine, you know, what material on their side of the service line was made of. But we did complete that inventory in accordance with regulations in October twenty-twenty-four, and that inventory was accepted by the Department of Health. Now, and we have quite a bit of information on our website regarding the lead service line replacement program, and anybody can go on the website and they can, we have a map feature, and anybody can identify what type of pipeline they have that serves their, that serves their home. You know, even before this, even before the rules had changed, we've been actively, you know, replacing service lines on the public side due to presence of laggoos deck connectors. So whereas we haven't had, we don't really have pipe that are fully lead that serve homes, you do have in some instances where there's a small connector from the main to the pipe, and I'll show you in a sketch what that is. But just because of the presence of that laggoos deck, the entire pipeline needs to be replaced, I'll show you that. The rule also requires that water suppliers should complete the replacement of all public and private service lines within ten years. We only had two service lines on the private side that were all lead, and those have since been removed under this program. And we had about sixty-five lead goosnet connector pipelines on the public side, and all of those have been replaced with the exception of about twenty. But we budgeted seven hundred thousand, the capital improvement program, for the next two years with the objective of removing all lead, impossible lead services in accordance with state and federal regulations. One key component of the Rhode Island law is that a galvanized pipe is considered a lead pipe in Rhode Island, whereas in Massachusetts, that's not the case. So we do have quite a few galvanized steel, galvanized iron services that may be replaced if the customer decides to replace them. Next slide. We've also developed a survey form for outreach to, you know, request people if we don't know what their material is made of. The website provides a video, and it shows them how to identify that, and then a survey so that we can know what their material is made of. Again, because it's the water suppliers' requirement to determine that. Next slide. Then here's that leg goosnet, just telling you about. So this would be the pipeline, the main pipe, and there would be a small, like, little connector piece here, and then connecting to either a copper or galvanized pipe to the home. And here is considered the public side up to the curb stop, and from the curb stop to the home, and considered the private side. Last year, Bristol County Water Authority Board approved a five-year finance program to assist customers to replace water services on their side, the cost of which is roughly flat to seven thousand dollars per location. And last year, we had ten customers participate in this program. As good as I've known before, we replaced thirty-eight on the public side. Oaktree Pump Station, which is built and designed to increase pressure within an area of Bristol. We have an area within Bristol which have very low pressure, and with this pump station, we've been able to phase in a number of customers with improved pressure. And so with this pump station now complete, we've improved pressure for eight hundred and another customers in the area. And then, once we complete that pipeline on Gurning Avenue, we'll be able to add an additional ninety-four customers to what we call the high-service area. For facility planning and removing of the obsolete tuna facilities and the dams, the dams were removed last year. At this point, there's only some minor work to be completed in the upper dam, which would be completed in the spring, as basically some minor, some minor grading and plantings. But as reported, our product's been largely supported by a number of environmental groups. We've received four-point-two million dollars in grant funds to cover the cost for the dam removals, so we not have to use rate payer money for that project. We completed Phase One of the plant demo, which were the exterior tanks and the piping back in the summer of twenty-twenty-three, and we continue to talk about removal of plant buildings, and that remains pending. This is a photo of the upper dam removal project, and a photo of the lower dam removal project. So our capital budget for FYI twenty-twenty-six is twelve-point-three million dollars, broken down into our, to the main projects. We have nine hundred thousand dollars for the completion of the Phase Two design work, three fifty for lead service line replacements, and one-point-eight million for one main of the completion of last year's project, which is about two, two-hundred-and-a-thousand dollars left for that, and one-point-five for this coming year. And we have miscellaneous field settling improvements and distribution systems improvements as well. Next slide. Our operation and maintenance budget for this coming fiscal year is a slight increase, less than one percent from last year's budget. We've been able to have, keep the budget cost low despite some increase in utility rates, increase in health costs, material costs. But the budget does meet our overall objective of continuing to maintain a high level of service, and meets our contractual salary benefit requirements for employees and funds the pension and OPAD fund for retirees as well. This, this chart kind of gives you a breakdown as to where the funds are going, and as you can see, a bulk of the money, it goes, is going back into the system. Capital construction making up forty-three percent of the overall costs, and that's either through cash capital and/or debt payments. The actual numbers themselves, you know, to, for, to maintain the O and M budget, the capital budget, debt service and plant demo, we identified a revenue requirement of nearly seventeen million dollars, and for that, we proposed a three-percent rate increase to support that revenue requirement and our ten-year financial plan going forward. The impacts, average residential usage, three percent, roughly twenty-two dollars per year, a dollar eighty-five per month. Another, we've been also looking at, it's the first time we've looked at miscellaneous fees and charges since I've been here. But we'd like to institute a new fee, an administrative lien processing fee of a hundred dollars. This would have a budget impact of two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars as we roughly have twenty to twenty-five K. as we roughly have twenty to twenty-five cases where we're placing liens on, on liquid accounts. We'd also like to replace or amend how we list the meter costs. Currently, we, we list the meter charge by, you know, by the type of meter, five eighths, three quarters, one inch, and there's an actual price. But given that the meter charges, you know, the actual cost of the meter changes annually, rather than list that and having to modify that year to year, typical practice is just to state the actual cost of the meter instead of actually having a defined price. We do that already for meters that are two inches and above, but we're asking that, that cost, that language also be used for the smaller meters. So in summary, the budget meets our strategic plan objectives, and that continues our work on our ongoing project to connect to Tucket. We have infrastructure projects for improved water quality and reliability. We'll continue to provide outstanding customer service using our latest major technology and ensures financial stability, maintaining reserves in the future increases. That concludes my presentation. If there are any questions at this point, thank you, Lauren.
We do have one member of the public in attendance. I don't know if she has any questions or comments I'd like to make.
I have no questions. It's a good presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, any board members have questions or comments at this time? It's a, it's an agenda item on the regular board meeting, so we can always have one discussion at the board meeting.
Can I ask one question? Do we have any different figures on what the new rates from Providence Water will be?
Um, yes.
They're proposing, yeah.
Lower.
They're not there, lower, you see first?
Yeah. My case is currently pending. They're, they're supposed to be lower.
Supposed to be low?
Yeah.
Good job.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, I'll close the hearing. Thank everybody for attending today.
Wait, do we close? Do we close the public hearing?
Yes, I do.
Do we need a motion? Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing. Zach.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Always glad to go to public hearing.
Close the public hearing.